On the County Council from May 1, 2008 and had been a former district councillor, having been on one of the councillors for the Chilton Ward on Sedgefield Borough Council from 1991 to 2008. Brian has also served as a Ferryhill town councillor and had previously been mayor of the town council. Brian's sudden passing came as a shock to us all. Brian was a devoted to everyone, his family, his friends, the wellbeing of others and the people he passionately represented. He did everything within his power for his community in that warmness, kindness and humility shone through the time of reflection following Brian's sad passing. Brian's character, his charm, his wit and his sheer dedication will be a huge miss to all of those who knew and worked with him. I know that group leaders or their representatives would like to say a few words about Brian at this point, so I will give you that opportunity now, one at a time. Councillor Shuttlesworth.
Morning, folks. I just wanted to say Brian was a true servant to the people of Ferryhill. Every day before half past seven in the morning, every night before half past seven in the night, he phoned me for a general chat, but it was all to do with something wanting done in Ferryhill. He was a true servant to those people and he'd be a real big miss. Rest in peace, Brian.
Thank you. Councillor Hopgood.
Thanks, Chair. I had both the honour and the privilege of speaking at Brian's funeral and just being there represented what Brian was to Ferryhill and to his family and he will be a huge miss to everyone in this chamber. Thanks.
Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Chairman. Brian gave 30 years of devoted and conscientious service to the people of Ferryhill and to local government in this county and I think we all recognise that and will miss him.
Councillor Shield.
Thank you, Chair. I would like on behalf of the Durham group members to pay tribute to an extremely honourable and decent gentleman who represented his division of Ferryhill with great distinction. Brian would never profess to be a great academic, neither would he profess to be a great orator, but he was hugely respected as an independent councillor since 2008 by the majority of constituents of Ferryhill. Brian was passionate and dedicated about his community, being extremely approachable and willing to help his residents in any way that would benefit them. I believe that would be greatly missed by all members and all officers of this council. Rest in peace, Brian. God bless. It was a pleasure knowing you.
Councillor Crute.
Thank you, Chairman. Brian was one of those increasingly rare things in local government circles. He was a real character and much more than that, he was a character who was both liked and well respected by officers and members across the place. And I know from first-hand experience in many scrutiny committees over many years that Brian held a real passion for Ferryhill and for the people of Ferryhill and it's those people of Ferryhill and beyond who've lost a true champion and both the community and the council are all the poorer for Brian's passing. The thoughts of the Labour Group are with Brian's family and close friends at this difficult time. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rob. Councillor Madison.
Thank you, Chair. I've known Brian for many years, both as a county councillor and his previous position as a councillor on Sedgefield Borough Council. Brian was a very enthusiastic speaker. I have attended many meetings where Brian was present and he spoke very enthusiastically about his passion which was Ferryhill and I'm just very, very sorry of Brian's passing. I'm sure everybody here will miss him and his contributions to the County Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I also ask Councillor Charlton, the chairman of the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee, to say a few words? Councillor Charlton.
Thank you, Chair. As Chair of Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee, I'd like to acknowledge the tremendous help, support and guidance of my former vice-chair, colleague and friend, Brian Avery. I will miss our chats and his encouragement terribly. Rest in peace, Brian.
Thank you. If I may add a few words, I was also at the funeral as a lot of members were, but what stuck out in my mind when the vicar said, "Brian knew everybody just about in Ferryhill, but everybody in Ferryhill knew Brian" and that's what he said and it'll stick in my mind for a long time. Thank you, members. Can I now ask you all to be upstanding for a moment for Brian? Thank you, members. Before we move on to the business on the agenda, I would just like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. You will note that measures once again are in place for social distancing and one-way system is in operation. If you need to leave the main hall at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave and re-enter the room. You must wear a face mask if you need to move around the hall. However, if you ask... I would ask you to limit your movements around the hall as much as possible during the meeting. You can remove your masks when you are seated. The external doors will be opened periodically to provide ventilation. Any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your hand in the air and a member of committee services will assist. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and wait until one of the microphone operators is in the proximity. The microphones are being wiped down after each use. Please be patient as the staff do their best to coordinate these arrangements. I would also like to welcome to the meeting members of the public. You are very welcome to attend and observe the proceedings, however, I request politely that you do not disprute the meeting. Can we move to item one, the minutes of the meeting held on the 20th of October 2021? Can I have a mover, please? Can I have a second, please? Members, are the minutes agreed? Thank you. Can we move to item two, declarations of interest? Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on today's agenda? Thank you. We'll move to item three, chair's announcements. Colleagues, you will recall at the last meeting I referred to attendance at events in my capacity as chair and I continue to enjoy attending events over the last month, including our own Christmas carol service held at County Hall last week. It also gives me great pleasure to announce that Durham County Council Children's Services were winners of the Supporting Social Solutions Service Award at the Local Government Chronicle Awards, which celebrate excellence in local government. Can I invite the corporate director of Children and Young People's Services to come and collect the award and say a few words about the award? Well done. You go to the podium. It's on the top.
Okay, is that working? Yep. Okay, I'll start again. So first of all, thank you, Chair. Absolutely delighted to receive this award on behalf of Children's Services. It's a really prestigious award nationally. We know that the judges looked at around 200 submissions in the children's services category, so I think for our team to win this award is really fantastic. The Support and Solutions Service, to say a little bit about them, they're a team who work with young people and families who are at the point of crisis. They work often out of hours, evenings, weekends. They're always there for our young people and families and they build relationships, long-term relationships often with the young people that they work with. And the passion and commitment of those staff really shone through and I think that was really evident in the submission to the judges. We're really proud of the work that they do on a daily basis and the impact that they have. So since the service was started in 2018, about 90% of the young people they work with, they've supported to stay at home or to stay with extended families and the relationships they've built have helped make a real impact and build long-term change in families and I don't think it can be underestimated, the impact that they have on the lives of some of our most vulnerable young people. So absolutely delighted, like to pass on my thanks to the team for the work that they do and I know that we hugely value, hugely evaluate and their commitment should never be underestimated, the work they do is amazing, so thank you, Chair.
Well done. Thank you for that and well done. Can move to item number four. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Thanks, Chair. As everyone is aware, the last weekend of November saw gale-force winds, torrential rain and heavy snowfall as Storm Arwen struck the region. Since then, we have been working extremely closely with our partners in County Durham and Darlington Local Resilience Forum to provide help and support to residents, including supporting National Power Grid and helping people affected by power outages. Work is still ongoing and I know council staff and all of our partners have been working extremely hard to help communities in the aftermath of the storm. My thanks go to everyone who has gone above and beyond to support our local communities in County Durham. It has been a huge effort. My thanks also to local communities themselves who have rallied around to support each other and also to the military for their support and assistance during what has been an extremely challenging time. Chairman, with your permission, I would like John Hewitt, our chief executive and chair of the LRF Strategic Coordinating Group, to give us the latest update. And can I also welcome Stuart Etherington, Chief Fire Officer and Chair of the Local Resilience Forum, who I would also like to give an update. Chairman, we do not intend to enter a debate on this item as I know officers and members have been dealing with many, many queries and are still responding to the incident. However, we will look at how a review is undertaken when we understand the national position on any review going forwards.
Okay. Members, in the circumstances, it would be appropriate to allow you to hear from Mr Hewitt and Mr Etherington. I would, however, ask that you save any questions or discussions that you may have for them outside of this meeting, please. Could I ask John and Stuart to go to the podium?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members, and hope everyone's okay. As members know, Storm Arwen hit large parts of the North East of Cumbria on the night of Friday, the 26th of November, one of the worst storms to hit our area in decades. From the councils and our local resilience partner perspectives, the immediate aftermath of the storm saw our teams dealing with fallen trees, blocked roads, damaged buildings and highways and helping local communities with storm damage. I want to go on record and thank every single member of staff from this council and our partner agencies who have been working tirelessly to clean up and keep communities safe since the storm hit. It has been an absolutely fantastic effort, especially after almost two years of dealing with the coronavirus emergency. Members are also aware of the significant impact caused by power outages to the electricity network in this county and neighbouring Northumberland, as well as other areas across the country. In this area, County Durham, the responsible organisation for resolving the power outage is Northern Power Grid, who have been working since the storm to restore power to homes in our county. It is important to note that meetings of our LRF partners took place over the weekend of the 27th of November, which the chief fire officer will cover in his update. However, through the Strategic Coordination Group, which I chaired on this occasion, the council, in agreement with partners from the LRF, declared a major incident on the 1st of December, when information from Northern Power Grid suggested power outages would not be restored until the weekend. At the same time, I initiated a request for military assistance on behalf of the LRF through the relevant procedures. With military assistance arriving in County Durham on Friday, the 3rd of December, the chief fire officer will provide some further context and information on the timing of this decision and our collective position as a local resilience forum, although I do want to put on record that we were the first LRF in the North East to declare a major incident. Chairman, in closing, can I also thank all partners, including the military and indeed members of this council, for their assistance during what has been an extremely challenging incident to manage. I will pass over to the chief fire officer, who will provide an update in his role as chair of the LRF for County Durham and Darlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Amanda, John, members. I'll just outline the initial actions that the Local Resilience Forum, or LRF, took in relation to Storm Arwen and the timeline of events that led up to the calling of the major incident on the 1st of December. The LRF put in place a tactical coordinating, coordinating group, or TCG, at 11 o'clock on Saturday, the 27th of November 2021, in line with the normal protocols we would put in place for a response to a significant incident in County Durham or in Darlington. The TCG was chaired by Durham Constabulary and had representatives from the following agencies, Durham County Council, the Civil Contingencies Unit, County Durham and Darlington Fine Rescue Service, North East Ambulance Service and Darlington Borough Council, as well as our military liaison officer. Focus of the TCG initially was dealing with the immediate aftermaths of the storm, getting routes reopened, following blockages from fallen trees or from the snow and ice that was affecting parts of County Durham and Darlington. There was concern over demand in the control rooms and contact centres and the power outages, primarily in the west of County Durham. The general advice that we gave to the public from all agencies at that time was to stay at home and only travel if it was absolutely essential. TCGs continued throughout Saturday and Sunday, with generally most agencies seeing a return to normal levels of activity. Power outages were still a concern, but the scale of the issue and the timelines for reconnection weren't clear at this stage. On Sunday night, a strategic call took place to refocus the TCG and specifically around power outages to understand what additional support might be required. The TCGs during Monday highlighted concern that the scale of the problem and the duration of the power outages warranted a strategic coordinating group to be established and this first met on Tuesday, the 30th of November. As LRF chair and with the information I have available to me at this time, I'm content that the LRF's multi-agency incident procedures were followed. Building on John's comments, not only were we the first LRF in the North East to declare a major incident, we were actually the first LRF in the country to declare a major incident based on power outages. Going forward, the LRF will be carrying out a full debrief and identifying any lessons learnt once we move out of the response phase. This is normal protocol for an emergency incident of this nature and there is tried and tested mechanisms in place to do this review. The LRF, however, is also keen to ensure our response to the storm is examined independently. We'll fully support whatever reviews are put in place and I've already spoken to the Department of Leveling Up, Housing and Communities, Resilience Emergencies Division, who have oversight of LRFs at a government level to help facilitate an external review of our response. The time, however, to do that review is once we move out of the response phase. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, John and Stuart. I will now invite the leader to continue with the presentation of her report.
Thank you, John and Stuart. Last month saw the successful return of Lumiere to Durham, with the festival's footprint extending far beyond the city. Six fabulous installations in locations, including Rebe Castle, Finkle Priory and the Pasmore Pavilion at Peter Lee, meant even more people were able to experience the magic of this amazing event, which also places a national spotlight on our county, an undeniable boost to our bid to be named UK City of Culture 2025. As we've already heard, November also saw the council scoop the Children's Services Award at the Local Government Chronicle Awards, so I'd like to offer congratulations to all involved. And 12 parks across County Durham have been handed Green Flag awards, which recognise excellence and good practice in the management and development of parks and open spaces. The awards reflect the high standards of maintenance needed to keep the sites looking good and also the involvement of local communities. I'd like to offer congratulations to Paul Derby, who has been appointed to the role of Corporate Director of Resources on a permanent basis. Paul has been a real asset to the council since joining in 2009 and has done an exceptional job during the past year as interim Corporate Director of Resources, guiding the council's finances through what has been a busy and challenging period. He has already proven to be a valuable addition to the corporate management team. In other news, we have recently submitted proposals to the government to consider the reopening of Ferryhill Railway Station, after the government allocated £500 million to restore railways and reconnect communities in 2020. A strategic outline business case is now with Department for Transport, which will decide on the next steps. Working with the Auckland project, we've also been successful in applying for the grant from the Department of Transport's Restoring Your Railway Fund to develop an early-stage proposal for plans to join the Bishop Auckland and Weyadale railway lines. A joint bid with Durham Constabulary and the PCC for County Durham and Darlington to the government's Safety of Women at Night Fund has secured us more than £100,000 to ensure our people in Durham city are as safe as they can be. The money will be used to offer training and education in how to be aware of vulnerability and to develop night-time safety. The council is amongst a number of organisations in the county to sign a new pledge announcing their commitment to work together to protect the environment. The County Durham Climate Change Agreement is a new initiative designed to create a strong and active partnership of organisations which will work together to make real environmental progress. Our local response to climate change was also the theme of the County Durham Partnership's first in-person meeting since October 2019. A wide range of partners, including the council, came together to discuss how we can strengthen the county's response to climate change. And we are also urging more people to consider becoming foster carers, with the launch of an appeal to recruit more carers for children with additional needs and disabilities. The council currently has over 250 families caring for children and young people, with carers able to continue supporting young people into adulthood, but we need more, in particular to support children who require additional support. And finally, as this is the last meeting of the year, may I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and hope that you'll all have time to rest, relax and spend time with your loved ones over the festive period.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions on the leader's report? Councillor Crute.
Thank you, Chair. At this stage, I don't have any particular questions for John Hewitt and Stuart Etherington about their response to the storm, but there are certainly many questions to be asked in the aftermath of the storm and especially about the political leadership and response during and after the event. So with your indulgence, Chair, I'd like just a few moments to frame a couple of questions in context, given the seriousness of past events and I assure you I'll be as quick as I possibly can. As Deputy Leader of the Labour Group, I wrote to the leader of the council last week asking for an independent inquiry into the council's response to the storm. From the comments and the desperate pleas we've received from our communities and businesses over the past 10 days, we need to make sure that any inquiry includes the voices of those affected and also covers questions around the political response. Residents and businesses right across the county have many questions that need to be answered, so I would hope that the leader of the council would accede to our call for a fully independent inquiry. And we've got to ensure that any forthcoming inquiry isn't used simply to report and blame. That wouldn't benefit anybody, but we need to pinpoint precisely where and how things went wrong and crucially, to ensure that lessons are learned from the mistakes made and that our residents are never again left in a position where they have had to endure many nights and days in darkness and freezing temperatures, many of them scared and alone. Now, I don't want to prejudge the outcome of any forthcoming independent inquiry, so at this stage and on a personal level, I would ask, does the leader of the council think that she did everything possible to mitigate the impact of the storm and would she do the same things in the same way in the event of another similar incident? And does the leader of the council feel that the coalition's response to the impact of Storm Arwen has let the people of County Durham down? And finally, as I said earlier, I don't... I don't wish to preempt the outcome of any independent inquiry. But I can tell you now this morning that the Labour Group is putting the Leader of the council and the Coalition Cabinet on notice pending the outcome of an independent inquiry into what happened after Storm Arwen two weeks ago. Thank you, Chair.
A lot of questions there, councillor, a lot of questions. Leader?
Thanks, Rob, for the question. Without wanting to preempt the answer, I have already told you that I'm prepared to meet next week when councillor Marshall returns from his holiday with both you and him, and we'll look at what we are going to do with regards to an independent review. If you'd seen any of the coverage on TV, you'll have seen me say that that was going to happen. So when it comes to political leadership, I was there first and foremost. And if you don't think I've done enough, then you may want to speak to my family, who haven't seen me for the last 10 days either. So that will all come out within the review, but I don't at this time intend to preempt anything.
Councillor Boyes, can I ask us a question of the Leader's report? Or is it on the storm? Because we did say, when John and Stuart got up that way, we'd be answering questions on the storm outside of this meeting. So can the question to nothing on the storm? Or is it on the storm?
Sorry, the question's not to the Chief Executive or Stuart. I'm sure our policies and procedures were followed. But I'm talking about on a personal level whether the political leadership was on the same level, if that's okay. It's just a quick statement from a member who was representing people in Islington. The Leader said that she'd been out for 10 days. I never saw her in Islington, I don't know.
It's not a statement that we wish. Well, the question to the Leader.
The question is, like our deputy Labour leader's just said, do we think we did enough? We've had people who were sitting next to a Cala Gustav who were freezing cold, people who were pensioners. And this needs to be said, it needs to be said at this forum. We're talking about people, not just processes.
Please, please. The questions for the storm, I clearly said when John and Stuart finished that they would be answered outside of this meeting, not at the Leader, but for Leader's questions and other things other than the storm. Okay, I see someone's hand up. Is it because the item's not working? Is it working? No? You can't have... Point of clarification, okay. Microphone, please. Microphone? Can you put your hand up, please stand up?
Thank you, Chair. It is a point of clarification for you as chairman. Are you saying that we are not allowed to ask the Leader a question which is part of her report? And that part of her report I'm referring to was the coalition's response to the storm.
From advice, it's a question that we have to, not a statement of things, what the Leader has said.
Chair, let me frame it a little differently then. From what you've just said, are you denying us the opportunity to ask a question of the Leader's report, which included the coalition's response to Storm Arwen?
Chair, if I could perhaps assist in respect of the procedure rules, this is the Leader's report, and members are entitled to ask the Leader questions on the items in the report.
I agree.
The Leader and the Chair have already indicated that this isn't an item of debate. If you wish to ask councillor Hopgood a question in respect of the storm, you can do that, but it's not an opportunity to make statements. Councillor Crewe has already asked a question in respect of the leadership, so any other questions need to be different to that one, rather than repeating the same question. But contributions from members, and we do have a number of members registered to speak on it, need to be limited to questions and not speeches.
That's fine, I'm very happy with that. Maybe I misunderstood the Chair when he tried to shout down my colleague, councillor Boyes. Thank you.
Councillor Atkinson?
Yes, thanks, Chair. You'll be pleased to know it's not about the storm. The Leader mentioned Ferryhill, Ferryhill Station. Could the Leader give any indication of the timeline of the events that will happen around Ferryhill Station?
Thanks, councillor Atkinson, for the question. No, at this moment, off the top of my head, I can't, but I'll make sure you get a written response.
Thank you.
Councillor Miller?
Thanks, Chair. My question is about the storm. And given that there was no leadership in Ludworth, which is a village that I represent, there was no support whatsoever, would... Yes, I'm going to the question now. Would councillor Hopgood agree that her and her cabinet failed the people of Ludworth and the wider county? And what does she say to those people in my community that are asking for her to resign?
Leader?
Thanks for the question. No, I wouldn't say we failed it. No, I wouldn't say that I haven't heard of any calls to resign, but I'm sure you'll send them to me in due course. And what we will be doing, like I've said, is a full review. And what we won't be doing is following the plan that was in place, that the Labour Party put in before this administration took over.
Okay, okay. Councillor McKeown?
Thank you. I also want to build on what councillor Atkinson asked regarding Ferryhill Station. I think it's great that there's a plan to reopen it, but I was wondering when the council's going to hear about proposals to reopen the Leamside Line, which runs through my area, and also any plans for a line to concert and how any reopening of Ferryhill Station would be impacted by the proposed reduction of services on the East Coast Main Line to Darlington and Durham train stations.
Leader?
As I'm sure you're aware, I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I will make sure you also get a full written response regarding the question that you've made.
Councillor Tensley?
Thank you, Chair. And just a question that relates specifically to a point in a statement that councillor Hopgood made there. She said that she was inviting councillor Crewe to a meeting next week to discuss the... I'm going to quote this, "A meeting to discuss what we are going to do about an independent review." Can councillor Hopgood please just give us a commitment that there will be an independent review? Absolutely, 100%, no options, no ifs, no buts. And it will involve all people from County Durham who have been affected by this terrible event, so they can input into this so we can all learn lessons to the future. I believe it's a yes or no answer. Thank you, Chair.
Leader?
I believe Stuart Earring gave you the answer that there would be an independent review. We will discuss this, as I've said last week. There will be a review, and I have given my commitment to members of the public who have been affected that they will have the opportunity to have their say. And I did that live on national television, so it's there for everybody to see and to hold me to account for in the future.
Councillor Richardson? Councillor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've heard a lot of brickbats thrown about, Storm Arwen. But I didn't say Amanda on the television, but travelling, I've heard her...
Councillor Snoss, statement, question, please.
I just want to wish, I just want to say that the Leader and the Chief Executive did really well.
Thank you, councillor, thank you. Councillor Mulholland?
What lessons has the Leader of the council learnt from the response of this politically... As I think many of my residents would appreciate the lack of political leadership on this. What lessons have been learnt? And how does she intend or do the council further in incidents like this? To show real political leadership and give residents to your mayor here the confidence that they should have in the Leader of the council?
I can record this and put it on repeat if you want, but basically what I've said is that we will be discussing it, we will be learning, but I'm not going to preempt any inquiry.
Councillor Beatty?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Alison Beatty, Polton Division. It's a question for the Leader, actually on Storm Arwen. I wasn't actually going to mention it, but I feel it's now necessary to, following the statement that she's just made about the previous leadership in the Labour Group. Does the Leader agree that benefits of having a regional civil contingency secretariat, which was once actually hosted in government office for the North East? It actually came about following the lessons learned from inquiries on the back of foot and mouth, fire strikes, flooding and fuel strikes. I'm actually extremely curious to know now whether or not the leadership is actually looking to press central government as to why that was abolished in 2011, and is the merit in having that local level of linkage between central and local government? Thank you.
Leader?
Councillor Beatty, thanks for the question. It will certainly form part of the investigation that we move going forwards. Can I just remind everybody that we are still in the midst of a major incident? So we can discuss this until time runs out, if you want, this morning. But the reality is that we're still dealing with a major incident. We have committed that we'll look at this once that incident and everybody we know is safe and reconnected, and we move on. I just think that we're going round in circles, but I'm happy to sit here and time out, if that's what you want.
Can I bring Helen in for one second?
Chair, we have three councillors registered to ask a question. The Leader has indicated that the time is quarter to 11. You have two and a half hours for your meeting, and we're still on item four of the business. So you may wish to take a view as to ask these three questions and then move on, but noting the questions and the answers that have already been given.
Councillor Fletcher?
Thank you. My question is regarding climate change. Thank you for mentioning, Amanda, about the County Durham Climate Change Agreement. However, we were all rather concerned when recently the City of Durham Parish Council withdrew the support for the Lib Dem City of Dur... Oh, sorry. The Lib Dem City of Durham Parish Council withdrew all support for the COP26 event in the City of Durham, which a lot of people had put a lot of hard work into planning. This led to a lot of worry, stress and pressure, where a limited company had to be formed in order to get insurance for the event to take place, which in the end was highly successful and engaged many residents in becoming more aware of climate change. Now parish councils and residence groups across the county are now looking at setting up their own action plans. Can we rely on support from the current administration for this work to go on? Or may we worry about having the support withdrawn, leaving parish councils and residence groups adrift?
Okay, leader?
Thanks, councillor Fletcher, for the question. I'm afraid I don't know the details about what you refer to, but I will look into it and come back to you. Thank you.
Councillor Sexton?
Thank you, Chair. Given the time, I'm going to withdraw my right to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Sirtis?
Thank you, Chair. My question is about the Leader's report in relation to Storm Arwen. I'm aware that I still have homes out in Islington, my ward, which was incredibly affected, as was the whole of East Durham. My question to the Leader today is, is what do you want to go and for me to tell my residents who still don't have electricity about how you've responded to Storm Arwen? And what do I say to this lady who's constantly texting me through this meeting saying, can you help me get some electricity? I haven't had any for nine days now. So please, can you tell me, what do you want me to say to my residents and to all of the other residents as well that have suffered? Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Sirtis. If you'd like to email the details of that resident across, then we'll make sure that someone contacts them. We rely on the information that we've got, and as I've said before, there will be a full review and we'll come back to that. But I have dealt with people in the east as well as the rest of the county. So getting heaters out to someone in Horden at 11 o'clock at night. So the response is what it is. It's still a major incident. We will deal with every response that comes to us. And moving forward, as I've already committed, there will be a review.
Okay, members, we'll bring this to the end now, and I'm going to close this item. Can we ask the council to note the report? Can we move on to item five, which is questions from the public? There has been no questions received for today's meeting. So can we move to item six, petitions? There's been no petitions in today's meeting. So we will move to item number seven, the report of the cabinet. Can I ask the Leader of the council to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. I present the report as tabled. Thank you.
Can I ask the council to note the report? Can we move to item eight? Appointment of Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Can I ask for nominations to fill the vacancy for the Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee?
Proposed, councillor Phil Heviside, chairman, thank you.
Do we have a second?
Chair, in seconding the nomination of councillor Phil Heviside for the position of Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities, of Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities, I'd like to place on record my appreciative work of the former Vice Chair, Brian Avery, and his unswerving support for the Chair, councillor Joyce Charlton. I'm sure that councillor Heviside, who's been a member of the same committee, will develop a cohesive working relationship with the Chair and officers. Thank you.
Are there any further nominations councillor? Can I have a second for that, please?
Thank you Chair, I would like to second councillor Jake Miller.
Thank you. I'll now pass over to Helen, who will take you through the procedure for the nominations.
Thank you Chair, we will follow the same procedure that we did for appointments made at the annual council meeting back in May. So we have councillor Heviside as one nomination and councillor Miller as the second nomination. We'll just wait for the moment for the vote to be loaded and then if you're voting in favour of councillor Heviside, click select one. If you're voting in favour of councillor Miller, select two. If you're abstaining, press three. If you press the wrong button, if you're pressing the correct one, we'll correct your vote. If you just give us a moment to load the nominations and I'll confirm when voting's open. That's the vote open. So it's councillor Heviside, number one, councillor Miller, number two, three to abstain.
We can close the vote.
Members, councillor Heviside, fifty-nine, councillor Miller, forty-two, there was no abstentions. Can I ask the council to agree the appointment of councillor Heviside as the Vice Chair of the Safer and Stronger Communities Overview and Scrutiny Committee? Thank you members. Can we move on to item nine, Review of the Gambling Act 2005 Statement of Principles? Can I invite the corporate director of neighbourhoods and climate change to present the report please?
Thank you Chair, good morning everyone. This report puts forward for approval of council a revised statement of principles in accordance with the Gambling Act 2005 and this statement will cover 2022 to 2025. The Gambling Act gives the council discretion to manage local gambling provision through regulation and the setting of fees. It also gives recognition of gambling as a mainstream leisure activity. The county council is required by the Act to publish a statement of principles, also known as the gambling policy, which sets out how we will carry out our work to determine licence applications for a variety of gaming and betting facilities. It should be noted that the remit of local authority control over gambling does not extend to online gambling, national lotteries or gambling advertising. The policy put forward clearly sets out the licensing authority's approach to regulation, having considered local circumstances. It ensures that gambling operators have sufficient awareness and understanding of our requirements and approach, including the view on risk, which will help them comply with gambling regulation. It provides the basis for determining licence applications for a variety of gaming and betting facilities. This includes bingo halls, betting offices, gaming centres, licensed family entertainment centres and a number of others. The Act and our policy are based on three principal objectives, which are preventing gambling from being a source of crime and disorder, being associated with crime or disorder or being used to support crime, to ensure that gambling is conducted in a fair and open way and also protecting children and other vulnerable persons from being harmed or exploited by gambling. The current policy has been reviewed. It's worth noting that the last revision in 2019 was a comprehensive one, which brought the previous policy fully up to date, including several national changes in guidance and legislation. Since 2019, there has been little in the way of new regulation and national guidance or statutory provisions, meaning that our current policy remains fit for purpose. At the end of the consultation period, three responses were received, all were carefully considered, some changes made to the policy statement and this draft policy was considered by the general licensing and registration committee, who have recommended the revised policy to council for adoption. The consultation responses are set out in appendix four of the report, they came from HM Revenue and Customs, gamblerware.org and the Durham Police and Crime Commissioner's officers. Most were minor, the revenue and customs was new contact details, the gambling aware submission drew our attention to some very useful online resources that we have assigned posted details to. The police and crime commissioner highlighted a number of important issues for consideration around extending, sorry, but these extended beyond the remit of the policy, seen as a separate strategic matter that would be broader than the statement of policy around the potential to protect from harm. The proposed policy fits as an important tool within this broader strategic approach. In conclusion, this policy has been consulted on, it's been revised in accordance with the Act and the government guidance, the necessary revisions are few and the responses have helped us to shape this new policy, which is now recommended for adoption to council by the licensing committee. The full policy is included in the appendix to the report and the recommendations are set out in full in paragraph five of the report.
Thank you. Can I have a mover for the report please?
Thank you Chairman. The Gambling Act 2005 enables the council discretion to manage local gambling provision through regulation and the setting of fees. The council is required by the Act to publish a statement of principles which sets out how we carry out our work and determine licence applications for a variety of gaming and betting facilities. This policy clearly sets out the licensing authority's approach to regulation, having considered local circumstances and provides the basis for determining licence applications. This statutory policy has been consulted on and revised in accordance with the relevant legislation and government guidance. And although there are only a small number of revisions, the responses have helped us to shape the new policy. The policy's been recommended for adoption by the licensing committee and therefore proposed as option to be moved as, sorry, proposed policy for adoption by the council. Thank you.
Can I have a second to the report please?
This policy has been recommended for adoption by the licensing committee and I am therefore happy to second this report. Thank you.
Do any of the members wish to speak on the report? Nobody registered. Can I ask the council to agree the proposed policy revisions and to agree the adoption of the revised Statement of Principles to come into operation following its publication on the thirty-first of January 2022? Thank you. Thank you members. Can item ten, Review of the council's hackney carriage in private hire licensing policy, I understand that this item will be reserved and delivered, deferred to February's, sorry, January's meeting, I'll get the right, January's meeting. Okay members, move on to item eleven, Midyear Review Report on Treasury Management for the period to the thirtieth of September 2021. Can I ask the corporate director of resources to present the report?
Thank you Chair and good morning members. This report provides an overview of our treasury management activity during the first six months of the current year and the position at the thirtieth of September for the council's borrowing and investments. The report meets the requirements of the Prudential Code and includes details of our performance against the treasury management policy and strategy and the prudential indicators agreed by county council as part of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget setting in February of this year. It's one of two reports brought to council each year on the treasury management activity of the council and members will recall that we consider the outterm position for last year at the council meeting in October. There is a table of paragraph twelve which summarizes our overall treasury management position and members will see at the thirtieth of September, we had total debt outstanding of around £408 million and total cash investments of £372 million. Our net debt position therefore at the thirtieth of September was £36 million. Comparison figures at the thirty-first of March twenty-one are provided in the table and members will see that external borrowing at the thirtieth of September was £45 million higher than the position at the first of April, reflecting new borrowing undertaken in the first half of this year, but that cash investments have also increased by £100 million, reflecting the receipt of significant grant funding to link to Covid and underspending in year to the thirtieth of September, particularly in the capital programmes. The council's borrowing activity is detailed in sections fourteen to twenty and members will see that £15 million of the borrowing entered into in the period relates to forward borrowing arrangements set up in 2018-19 and the report contains details and the background of those arrangements. The average interest rate paid on our external debt at the thirtieth of September is 3.26% and there's an overview of our investment activity set out in the report at sections twenty-three to twenty-six and the table of paragraph twenty-four provides a breakdown of the institutions, the length of investment and the interest rates secured on those investments at the thirtieth of September. All investments remain in line with our treasury management strategy. In line with the requirements of the Prudential Code, the report sets out details of performance against the various treasury management and prudential indicators, including details of capital expenditure and financing and our capital financing requirement in twenty-one, twenty-two and to the position to the thirtieth of September. Members can take comfort from the fact that the council continues to fully comply with all of the requirements of the treasury management strategy and our policy and is meeting all of the requirements of the Prudential Code. The recommendations Chair has set out in paragraph five and to note the report Chair.
Thank you. And before I take any questions, councillor Bell, you wish to speak on the report?
Thank you Chairman, I would like to thank the officers for this comprehensive update on our treasury management activity during the first half of this financial year and for the information setting out our position as of thirtieth of September. It is pleasing to note that the council has continued to fully comply with all the requirements of the treasury management policy and strategy we agreed back in February. Carefully managing our cash flows, external borrowing and investments and maintaining compliance with the relevant codes of practice in line with our prudential framework is fundamental to delivering on our fiduciary responsibilities for public money. The headline figures as has been said are £408 million of borrowing, £80 million of other debt and £372 million held in cash balances. Treasury management is an important area of activity and as the report sets out, we are in a strong position and I know that Mr Darby and his team are constantly reviewing our position and making adjustments as appropriate. With that Chair, I would like to request that council notes the report.
Thank you. Does any of the members have any questions on the report? No one registered. Can I ask the council to note the progress with the treasury management strategy 2021-22? Thank you members, can we move to item twelve? Director of Public Health Annual Report 2021. Can I ask the Director of Public Health to present the report?
Thank you Chair and good morning members. I think Colleague is going to present, put the slides up for me this morning. In your pack you will have the front report, the full Director of Public Health report, Putting Life Into Living and this presentation which I'm going to take you through this morning, just to highlight some of the work that's taken place over the last year. This is my fourth annual report as your statutory Director of Public Health and it's a requirement for me to write a report and for that to be published. However, as your Director of Public Health, any work that we do within public health can only happen in partnership with other people and working through and with, particularly with our communities. And I think you'll see that coming through strongly in this report. It's my fourth report as Director of Public Health and it outlines the priorities that we've wrapped around our fictional family, the Taylor family and their communities. However, I think again, what you will see understandably is how we've responded in the last year on a continued basis to the Covid nineteen pandemic in which we continue to do so. The report also highlights the approach to wellbeing as a way of working and we know that by, only by working with and alongside our communities that we can support them to improve their health and wellbeing. And finally, the report does need to reflect both the needs and assets of our local communities and that will come through strongly in the report. If we can move on to the first slide, which is our roadmap in terms of health and wellbeing. And I think we're very fortunate in County Durham to have a team of staff who work constantly on our intelligence to give us really clear facts and figures, but that's got to be complemented with communication and conversations with our local communities. And I think what you can see in the report and in the roadmap are some of the things that we have had a real challenge with in County Durham in relation to our health and wellbeing. We have significant assets in our county, including our people, a lot of our places. However, in the last year and particularly through the impact of Covid, what we've seen is our life expectancy begin to stall, both for men and both for women, and that is falling significantly behind the England average and that impacts on every aspect of people's lives. We also see that in terms of our children living in poverty, that remains higher than in many other parts of the country. However, in terms of positives, what we've seen and it's a long-term approach to things like our teen into pregnancy and conceptions are much lower than what they were over ten years ago. And we do, as I say, see many assets in our county, including over forty-three crees, which have given a huge amount of support to people during the pandemic, very informal and particularly focused around men, but we also have some young people. men, but we also have some young people persons crees. And across the county, we also have over 170 breastfeeding friendly businesses, and these are helping us with some of our key challenges in terms of addressing health inequalities and in relation to health outcomes in County Durham. Thank you, Michael. We have continued with our response to Covid-19 throughout 2021, and the slide really just pulls out a couple of key areas that we've continued to work on. In January of this year, we took control of our own contact tracing, which meant that we were able to follow up with people who had cases of Covid-19, and that did make a huge difference because our local teams were able to talk to people who had tested positive, understand what their needs were, link them to other council services, to the community response, be it food, be it medication, be it just a chat as they were trying to self-isolate, but also to ensure they had the right access to funding during that time. And we continue with that work to date. Throughout the course of the pandemic of this year, we've also done some really great work with our schools and education, the production of dedicated materials, and also the development of a Covid Junior Champions Programme, which is starting to come to the fore. And we, in conjunction and very much led by our NHS partners, have seen one of the largest vaccination programme in County Durham. Obviously, for a county the size and scale of ours, it is a real challenge, and we saw our NHS partners, but also volunteers, the fire and rescue services, really step forward to take up the call to the vaccination. And our local communities really stepped up to that too. So currently, our vaccination rate is 84% for our first vaccination, 78% for our second vaccination, and for the booster, which is now for all over 18s, we stand at 32%. So still a way to go, and we've done a huge amount of work behind the scenes, again, with local communities, targeting where our pop-up vaccination, the Melissa Bus would be, and using local venues to really dig beneath the surface to try and ensure that there's fair access to that vaccination programme, and we'll continue with that. And ongoing work in terms of Covid is with all of our settings, be that schools, prisons, our care homes and our community settings, and the team have used the com funding to ensure that can take place in as a fair way as possible, and also with things like compliance. So it continues to be a huge, huge effort. Thank you, Michael. So we set out, I think, in 2017 with the priorities around the Taylor family, of which there were seven identified, and I'm just going to run you through a short update, and there's more detail in the report, of four of those, and then a little bit more detail on the three final priorities that we've highlighted in this report for 2021. So, thank you, Michael. In terms of our priorities in relation to mental health at scale, and I think we all have felt the impact of the pandemic certainly in relation to mental health, but we have had a dedicated programme looking at mental health across the county and ensuring that can support people, particularly in small businesses, and we launched our Employment Assistance Programme and our Healthy Business Training Home in August of last year. And that was both for small businesses but also for our community voluntary sector. And to date, we've had 13 mental health first aid courses. We're building the capacity and the ability of our community volunteers, our small businesses, to think about mental health and to break down that stigma in relation to talking about mental health and having practical support in place, building on what we already have. For every child to have the best start in life, we really have worked hard with our schools and our early years and further education, for schools to start working towards their health and wellbeing framework. I think I was particularly delighted to actually see this work launched. It's been developed with our schools, and we've had really positive feedback, and the framework has been changed based on feedback from parents, from teachers and from young people themselves. Through our framework, we'll stand us in good stead to look at what health and wellbeing, how we can improve that within the school setting and obviously out into local communities. We've also continued our work, and we are an exemplar now for the Better Health at Work Award as an organisation. We've reached continuing excellence, but we've tried really hard to reach new organisations this year, including two of our care homes that have started to take part in the Better Health at Work Award, and another further eight that have taken up and being part of the Better Health at Work Award. And then finally, and we have as an organisation, we had within our County Durham Plan a policy to restrict access to hot food and takeaway food, and you'll see later in the report why that's necessary because we're seeing an increase in unhealthy weight, particularly in our children. And we're one of only two local authorities across the whole country that has been able to put that policy into practice and ensure that we actually do not have takeaways approved within a vicinity of any of our schools. Thank you, Michael. So there's three key themes in the report, promoting positive behaviours. Now, we know that our residents, it's not easy to undertake and to be and stay healthy and well, and it doesn't just depend on you doing, having the right behaviour. It also depends on where people live, whether they've got a job. However, I think what we've seen over the last year in terms of some of the positive behaviours is a real shift, particularly in some of our work, again, within schools. So we had over 76 schools that have signed up to the Active 30 Programme, a really easy way. You know, people don't need to purchase posh equipment or training shoes, they take part in physical activity every day. We continued that during the pandemic when schools were in restrictions to reach out to parents, to do that with their children when they were being home-schooled, with additional funding and materials for them to do that, and we hope to build on that in the coming year. Smoke-free County Durham have seen an uplift in the numbers of referrals from our housing provider, and again, we really want to see that increase and improve in the coming year. And then our licensing team, who obviously had to carry out major response in terms of the pandemic, have now started to pick up their work with licensed premises, and have certainly done a huge amount of work on the What's the Harm campaign, which is around thinking about how we talk to young people in relation to alcohol. Thank you, Michael. High-quality drug and alcohol services is one of the other final priorities, and this has been a real focus in County Durham since I came to the county four and a half years ago. And over the last year, as well as some real dedicated work through the pandemic and our services having to do a lot of work remotely with clients, huge amounts of work with our prison sector, for example, to support people who have been released from prison, who needed access to drug and alcohol, but we've actually established some dedicated outreach facilities and also some dedicated female drug and alcohol services, which are of a real benefit to parts of our communities. And what we're supporting, working with licensing to think of new ways to tackle drug and alcohol. And obviously, what we've seen in the last couple of days is the government launched their drug strategy, and will be seeking additional funding, hopefully through the new drug strategy, to continue with this work. And then the final priority, thank you, Michael, is the better quality of life through integrated health and care services. Huge amount of partnership working that takes place in County Durham with our social care and NHS partners and with our local communities. I've already highlighted the Covid vaccination programme, and it's been really important this year to keep our flu vaccination programme as high as possible. And since the report's been published, we were just discussing yesterday that the at-risk eligible population for flu, their uptake is actually over 60%, which is really positive, and we hope to maintain that. We've really seen some of that work on vaccination stand us in good stead. But also in County Durham, we've got a really exemplar programme called Joining the Dots, which was originally funded from Macmillan and is now being picked up from the NHS partners, but has been absolutely about working with our local residents who've been affected by cancer. I've seen that they were being pushed from political post in terms of services, and they needed those dots joining up, and now we have a really, really comprehensive service in place, but with those residents at the heart of it. And then we do have our social prescribing link workers, and again, they've worked really hard during the pandemic to link primary care out, to give simple advice and links to people, low-level advice and information. And then finally, one of the things that's not in the report but something which has been developed this year is we've actually got some new reading for wellbeing coaches, based on some work with Anne Cleves, who's the author of Vera, and we have our wellbeing coaches now in place. And again, very low-level support, thinking about different ways to improve people's health and wellbeing. So next slide, thank you, Michael, revisits our Taylor family as we start to move from a fictional family to the huge number of examples of people seeking to improve their health and wellbeing. And you can see on this slide a real-life case study, someone who volunteered for the vaccination programme. Certainly, when I went to have my booster on Saturday, the first person who greeted me was a volunteer giving up their Saturday to engage people in the vaccination programme. Brilliant, brilliant work and beneficial to their health and wellbeing too. And then the second is a crease. So for older people who maybe have accessed the crease for that support is really, really crucial. The Director of Public Health report, thank you, Michael, always has to end with recommendations that I'm held to account for, and you can see in here we've got recommendations linking to those positive behaviours, the quality of life through the integration of services, and also finally for high-quality drug and alcohol services. And I think as a teacher would always be remiss of me not to finish probably in thinking about our tobacco prevalence. 50% of inequality is due to levels of smoking. We've actually seen them increase. We're hoping to see them decrease again very soon, but it's a real priority, helps to lift our families out of poverty, and also will be a real focus in the year coming forward. So, Chair, this is the report for the Director of Public Health, and the recommendation is to receive the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Boyce?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Amanda, for that report. You did mention that life expectancy has stalled for the first time in about 100 years, and if we drill down further, some of our most deprived communities, you know, are expected to live seven years less than some of the better-off communities in County Durham. And this is a sad indictment on what's happened over the last 10 years. The Marmot Review made a lot of recommendations which were totally squashed by this coalition, where the former coalition government and then the Conservative government. So would you say that it's a sad indictment of like these Conservative government's policies that we are in the situation now where even if somebody is lucky enough to like reach their average life expectancy, the chances are if you're in a deprived community, it's going to be 17 years of poor health. So do we accept now that what has happened shouldn't have happened, and we're in a terrible perilous year because of it?
Chair, just to point out that the Director of Public Health is an officer of the Council and as such is politically neutral, so she's not able to answer that question.
Does any other member wish to speak on the report? I have councillor Howie. Stand up. Sorry?
No, he's called on councillor Howie. Councillor Howie will come to you in a moment.
Hi, councillor Howie, Woodhouse Close Division. Thank you for the report there. That was really, really good. I just want to know, having used myself in 2019, the social prescribing link workers, they're absolutely amazing, they've helped me absolutely massively, but not all GPs are used in that service. Is that something that's going to be rolled out further across the board? Because I think it would be advantageous to a lot of people.
Thank you, and it's good to have the positive feedback in terms of the social prescribing link workers. We're actually busy reviewing those at the moment to look at ensuring that fair access, so I'll bring back an update to make sure that they're situated in the right way and they're delivering in the right services, because they're not always linked to all GP. So we're busy reviewing them at the moment and be able to bring something back. Thank you.
Councillor Keir?
Can you hear me? First of all, can I congratulate the Director and the Department for the success of the 42 crees, 43 crees across the county? That's excellent. I believe the first one was in Eldon Lane, Dean Valley, but I may be starting to be corrected on that. And interesting too to hear you, I'm sure I heard you correctly, that there are a couple of lady, lady crees? Is that what you would call them? Crees for women. Are they for women only, or are they mixed? Because the reason why I'm asking is I know there's a huge stigma, stigma, if I could say it properly, around these crees. There was initially. I was trying to establish one in my division, and when people found out what I was trying to achieve, they were reluctant to come forward, which I think is a rotten shame because I've seen the good work that they do. So what I was wondering was, are the ones with ladies present, are they mixed, or are they, you know, gender separate? And the second part, I'll be brief, Chair, can I come and see you and the Head of Wellbeing, Adults and Adult Health to discuss the mental health strategy going forward? Because I'm sorry to be a bit of a damn screw on this one, but the service as is, is not very good, I'm afraid. And I can give you examples, I'll not save it for this morning, when I see you in person at some point in the future to discuss that with you, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Interestingly, in terms of the crees, so crees were traditionally just for men, and we've actually now got a range of crees across the county. And I'm attending their network tomorrow to really understand a little bit more about how they've grown and developed. So we've got, we have got a mixture. Some of them are men only, some of them are young peoples, some of them are mixed. So I'm more than happy to do a briefing perhaps after they bring the network tomorrow and share that back with councillors. We'll obviously take their mental health requests back and talk that through with the Corporate Director too. Thank you. End of councillor.
Councillor Saxon?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to put it on record, my thanks to the Public Health Director and the whole team. It's been a very challenging 20 months or so. I think we can all agree on that, and not only do they continue to look after us all in terms of the vaccine rollout, the new booster rollout, but also, as that report outlines, the whole of our general health and wellbeing. So thank you very much to Amanda and the whole team.
Councillor Gunn?
Thank you, Chair. And I would like to first of all thank Amanda for that report, and also place on record my thanks to Amanda and her team for all the work they've been carrying out during a very, very challenging time. I would like just to mention the new report, The Child of the North, which you've probably seen, that's found that health and education inequalities between children in the north of England and elsewhere in the country have worsened during the Covid-19 pandemic. And so what I'm saying here is that it will be, I'm sure, about going forward on all of the really good work that you've carried out already, but it will be about building resilience and opportunities for what is being called the Covid generation. I'm sure you will agree that there is an enormous amount of work to do in this area, and our children are very much our future. And so focusing on that, I welcome very much indeed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Gunn. Yeah, I mean, the report that's been published this week, you know, is really highlights the challenge that I face in terms of child poverty and that gap between the north and other parts of the country. And as ever, and just in the Marmot Review, that enabling children to have that start in life and continued good childhood...
in life and continued good childhood has got to remain a real priority. I think what has happened certainly during Covid is that we've, from Public Health, we've got really strengthened relationships with education and social care colleagues. And I think the work that we've done will stand us in good stead to really think about and focus our attention in the right places. So an example of that is some of our review of some of our mental health work in schools, for example, to make sure it's fair and situated in the right places. But absolutely will continue and strengthen that focus on children and young people, learning from what's in that report and taking that on board. Thank you, councillor Gunn.
Thank you. Can I remind members, please redchester using your handset. If your handset's out of order, just raise it up. Councillor Jobbling?
Councillor Jobbling, Crook Division. Just with Charlie's point on mental health, the Adult Health Committee has been doing an awful lot of work with the fallout from Covid, not just with mental, mental health is flagged up all the time, and it is something that has, has got to be looked at properly. But we've also been looking at the doctors' appointments, because this is a fallout that affects everybody. Your dental appointments, all these sort of things that seem to be very difficult now for people to register. So yes, Charlie, I'm more than happy to meet with you and discuss mental health, because it is flagged up virtually at every meeting we have.
Thank you. Councillor Hovells?
Lucy Hovells, Trimson and Thornley Division. Can I thank Amanda for the report? It is your report, something that you work on all the year through, and obviously highlights some of the big-ticket issues, very important to our communities that we all serve. One particular thing you mentioned, Amanda, is the assets within our community. We've got some real gems within our communities, whether that be the green environment or be the coast, that runs right across several divisions. And I see that work's vitally important, and you don't work in isolation, you work with lots of different departments, well, I would say all the departments within the council, because everything's interlinked, whether that be the environment, whether that be transport, whether it be children's services or whatever. It's a very important role, and I see their importance, but also the learning that you take from it. I've certainly learnt a lot from working alongside you in the previous role. And I think that's important, to say that. The other, just looking at my notes, and obviously involving residents, because all the work does involve the residents, but the work that you do does help change policy. We've seen various examples in there, and you've set yourself short, because I know there's a lot more, that you could have mentioned. And I think bringing that change in policy does improve people's lives. I want to place on record my thanks for all the work that you do on behalf of the residents of County Durham.
Councillor Taylor, you didn't appear on the redchester to speak, but you did raise your hand. Do you still want to speak, Councillor Taylor? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Can I ask the council to receive the annual report, please? Thank you, Amanda. Can we move to item 13, motions on notice? There are two motions for consideration. The motions will be dealt with in the order in which they were received and detailed on the agenda. The first motion was carried over from the previous meeting. Motion from councillor Malloy. I will hand over to councillor Root as well. I will now hand over to Helen.
Thank you, Chair. Just before we get into the motions, just to clarify the rules of debate, as always, the usual rules of debate apply. Movers of a motion have five minutes to speak, and secunders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, other than the mover who has a right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time, and no further amendment can be moved until after the amendment and the discussion has been dealt with. Each member can speak once on an amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, the amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Malloy, would you like to give your motion?
Thank you, Chair. As you know, this motion was deferred from the last council meeting due to lack of time. Since then, I understand that the Cabinet Member for Adults and Health Services and the council's Armed Forces Champion has discussed my proposal, and that the Cabinet supports the idea of extending the discounted rates of gym and swim membership at council leisure centres to veterans of all ages. These will be introduced under officer delegated powers from the 1st of April 2022. I would like to thank the Cabinet Member for his support and withdraw my motion as it is no longer required. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Root, can you move your motion, please?
It's fairly straightforward, I don't think I'll use the full five minutes. Whenever it crops up in conversation, it's almost universally accepted that the current council tax system is outdated and unfair, especially to those people living in towns and villages like our own in County Durham, where the burden of council tax falls disproportionately on young people, on low earners, and on those struggling to get by. Successive governments have had 30 years to reform the council tax system, but none have taken that opportunity, suggesting that the entire system is beyond reform and in need of replacement by a fairer, more equitable system. That leaves us with just two main options. We either plough on regardless, do nothing until the system reaches breaking point, or we seek to find a better, fairer way of doing things. The first option, of course, wouldn't benefit anyone, so I'm suggesting this morning that we need to take a closer look at the benefits of a proportional property tax, a fairer system that reveals the hardest hit with the heaviest burden, reduces housing market inequalities, frees homes to those who need them most, and a system that actually puts money back into people's pockets and kickstarts our local economies. Without wishing to go into detail at this stage, because there are quite a few technicalities, we could focus instead on the core principles of a proportional property tax, and also take a closer look at the main benefits, all well-researched and all fully costed. And these have been provided, Chair, by the Fairer Share campaign. The principles include the notion that property tax should be based on actual property wealth, the burden should be shared proportionately, it should be simple to understand, easy to administer, and hard to avoid, it should be fair, with wealthier regions supporting other areas, it should relate to a household's ability to pay, and it should encourage the most efficient use of land and buildings. And the benefits nationally include 18 million households would be better off, with 75% of current council taxpayers paying less. Six and a half billion pounds would be saved by council taxpayers outside London, representing a huge boost to our local economies and communities. 8.7 households, million households, sorry, would be taken out of property tax entirely, because the obligation to pay falls to the landlord rather than the tenant. Each year, 750,000 house buyers would no longer have to pay stamp duty, making house buying simpler and cheaper, and an increase in GDP of £3 billion a year from increased housing market activity. And finally, 600,000 homes over five years would be relaced, freeing up homes for younger people and those who need them most. If we can accept those principles at this stage, Chair, and agree that the benefits of a fairer system outweigh the current burden of the council tax and stamp duty regime, we can then, as an authority, work together with any external agency necessary to make change happen for the benefit of our local councils and their communities, and more importantly perhaps, for the benefit of the residents of County Durham and elsewhere who deserve a better, fairer system after decades of bearing a disproportionate tax burden. So I propose the motion as printed in this morning's papers. Thank you, Chair.
The motion will require a secondar?
Council tax is a broken tax. Everybody in any part of government knows this. The remarkable thing is that no one has managed yet to find a way to reform it. While the tax continues to hit our hardest residents, sorry, our poorest residents hardest, pushing them into poverty and making it harder for councils to raise funds for critical local services. As things stand, someone renting a two-bedroom semi in Aizton pays the same council tax as the owner of a multimillion-pound townhouse in Westminster or Hammersmith. Councils are at the sharp end of this unfair tax, and councillors know that the current funding system is unsustainable. Only 11% of councillors and senior officers think the council tax is fit for purpose in its current form. My preferred option for moving forward is replacing council tax and stamp duty with a proportional property tax, set at 0.48% of a property's value. Those are the words of Graham Morris MP. Replacing council tax and stamp duty should be part of the roadmap for a fairer Britain. It's a fundamental principle of taxation that taxes should be simple, transparent, and fair. Yet these taxes achieve none of these things. Ultimately, these taxes are unfair, complicated, and block aspiration, because the poorest find themselves hardest hit, complicated because they are difficult to understand and command, an intricate web of bureaucracy to administer, and they hinder aspiration by taxing property transactions and discouraging people from moving home. It has a devastating impact on low-income households, who, if they're unable to pay, are aggressively pursued by local authorities and debt collection authorities, in some cases even imprisoned. The Fairer Share campaign has provided us with an excellent blueprint for reform. I urge the Chancellor to take this proposal seriously, starting by announcing the fundamental review of council tax at this year's autumn budget. Those are the words of Kevin Hollingrake, Conservative MP. There is a solution to reform council tax by linking it to property values on a proportional basis. The idea also has intellectual pedigree here in the UK, with prominent think-tanks and campaign groups, including the Institute of Public Policy Research, the Social Market Foundation, Damos, and the Centre for Policy Studies. Ominous ministers talk of building back better, excuses for inaction are running out. Proportional property tax, any tax reform must have cross-party support to be sustainable. PPT now does, having previously been largely the exclusive reserve of the Liberal Democrats, this should not be squandered. Now is the time for all politicians to call time on council tax and get on with the job of making our residential property tax a fairer system. Those are the words of Sir Vince Keable. Chair, I second this motion presented, and ask all members to do the right thing and do likewise.
Thank you. Does any other member wish to speak on this motion? Councillor Bell?
Chair, I wish to move an amendment on this motion, and we'll just wait a moment while the amendment is distributed, please. Right, thank you, Chair. I think all members are almost receiving the amendment. The amendment deletes the final phrase, only a few words, as you can see, very simple amendment. It's widely accepted that the council tax system is a regressive system, that's to say it's a type of tax that is assessed regardless of income, and we have, as a council, consistently highlighted the inequities in terms of tax-raising capacity across local authorities, and how we suffer from our low house prices and low tax base relative to other councils. We've previously written to ministers to call on the government to take this into account in terms of funding allocations, and we await with interest whether this is being factored into the methodology for distributing the additional £1.5 billion of support being provided to the sector next year. There are a range of alternative systems to council tax, and a proportional property tax is but one. There could, for instance, be local income taxation, or reforms of the council tax system as it exists to add additional bands at the top end. All systems have benefits and disbenefits, and we would need to carefully weigh up the options and issues arising from any alternatives. It's important to note that a proportional property tax is a contender as an alternative, but it too could be a regressive tax that is payable regardless of income, as it's based on house value. I wonder if the advocates of the motion today have talked to the registered social landlords about what effect it has on their costs? I imagine the social landlords would just pass it off in terms of rent. With relatively low house values and incomes, any local method of raising revenue will always see Durham languishing behind the southern shires in the money it can raise. Arguably, the more important issue than how we raise taxes locally is how central government takes money away from the more affluent areas and redistributes it to less affluent ones. Fair funding from the centre is key to our financial health. The basic point that council tax paid by a Durham resident as a proportion of their house value is high compared with the southern shires is valid, but these are matters for national decisions and legislation. There are no plans, as far as we are aware, for the government to review or replace the council tax system as a means of part-funding local services. So what can we as a council do? Well, we will continue to support those on low incomes with the most generous council tax benefits system in the region and possibly the country. We will continue to work with collective bodies like the LGA and the CCN, who work on behalf of the sector to influence government. And we will continue to work with our six local MPs, to whom we explained our MTFP last Friday, to influence government. And we will respond to any consultation the government puts out on the method of local taxation, the redistribution of resources from the centre, including business rates. I would say finally to members that jumping to a proportion of property tax as a council policy now is both inadvisable and premature, and I would urge members, for that reason, to support the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Second, please, for this motion?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to extend my thanks to councillor Rob Crute for raising this issue, as it's one I and many others feel very strongly about. It's been on the Cabinet's list of things to consider undertaking, but we've had one or two other more pressing issues to deal with first. As councillor Richard Bell has pointed out, this is a matter for central government, but as we are one of the larger authorities in England, I'd like to think that any lobbying we do would be taken very seriously indeed. There's no doubt something needs to be done. The current system is outdated and unfair. It favours those with property wealth and was skewed in their favour from the outset. But if we were to lobby for a proportional property tax in isolation, it may have serious implications for this council. How council tax is collected and distributed more fairly is probably an even bigger consideration to factor into any reform. But we have to call for reform. We have to contribute to the debate and any consultation. We do need a better deal. Proportional property tax in isolation could actually make things worse, and that's why I'm willing to second councillor Richard Bell's motion to call for reform, scrap the current system, and come up with something that will be fairer and more balanced for everyone. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Adcock Foster, you requested to speak before the amendment was moved. Do you want to speak on the amendment? Okay, thank you. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, yes, councillor Johnson, Shildon Dean Valley. I was prepared to support the original motion, as I personally have looked into the proportional property tax and found it to be a decent system to replace council tax potentially, obviously with further research. However, I agree, actually, that we shouldn't limit ourselves to one option. Everybody seems to agree that council tax is a regressive system which doesn't benefit the people of County Durham. I don't think it benefits people in many parts of the country, to be honest with you. One thing I would say is that it says this is an outdated system. I might even add that it's never been fair. It's been in place for 30 years, and it's been a disgraceful system, actually. And it's quite right to state that governments in the last 30 years have failed to repeal this system. So, on a personal note, I'm glad to see that we seem to agree, and I will actually be supporting this.
Thank you. Councillor Tinsley?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think it's very positive that we've reached a consensus in this room that council tax is a tax that's wrong, it's pernicious, and it's not working. But really, the question here is, what's the way forward? Now, just my former colleague said he'd looked at this matter, and I've looked at this, and if you look across the developed world, most developed countries do have a system of property taxation, and it's seen as a way to fund local government. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it is the right way. But the reason that I struggle to support this amendment is that what essentially this does, it just kicks the matter into touch. And I think on this side of the room before, we've been criticised when we put motions forward, that we've just sought to condemn, I think that was one of the options before. But what we're doing here is just saying that, yeah, the system's wrong, you know what, we've got no ideas about how we're going to fix it. But I think as a local authority, such as ourselves, such as significantly a local authority, we are really key stakeholders in actually plotting a way forward for the future of taxation locally and how we fund local government. Funding local government is going to be central to the levelling up agenda. We're in a situation today and now where the white paper and levelling up has been kicked further down the road into the new year. So I can't support this because it doesn't plot a way forward. If there was a commitment from this authority to investigate the matter and actually come up with something within a timeframe that we could then put into central government as a way forward, I could consider it. But there is no timeframe. This is just about kicking this matter into touch and hoping it goes away. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Miller?
Thanks, Chair. I don't wish to comment on the context of the amendment, but to ask a question, have we really just wasted all of this paper for four lines? And to ask, moving forward, is there any chance that we can move away from distributing? I mean, look at all that waste on a piece of paper all the way around the room for four lines.
Chair, we've previously addressed this question. Currently, in the position that we're in, we have to, and we, you know, we could be criticised for not putting it out if people aren't clear on what the amendment is. So that's why the decision's been taken. It is recycled paper, and we're encouraging people to use, to recycle the paper that's, once it's finished with.
Councillor O'Mahony?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman. Thirty years ago, the hated poll tax was defeated, and it was defeated by a man called Michael Carr, who's now a resident of our county, incidentally, who won the Ribble Valley by-election. The then Conservative government panicked and brought in the council tax as a temporary measure while a better system was devised. Here we are, 30 years on, with no better system. Not only is the council tax no longer fit for purpose, it never, it never really was fit for purpose. It's a great motion from councillor Crute, but like councillor Johnson, I don't believe that we should limit ourselves to just looking at one replacement. There are many other potential alternatives, such as local income tax or land value tax, lots of other ideas to look at. And I don't really understand councillor Tinsley's point about this amendment setting no timeframe, because as far as I can see, the original motion didn't, didn't either. I'm not quite clear on that one. But let's not tie our own hands, and I support the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. Like councillor O'Mahony, I'm rather confused at councillor Tinsley's comments, and I would wonder whether he would reconsider them, because removing the only part of this item which identifies a specific alternative isn't kicking it into touch, it's actually allowing us to look at all possible options. And I would hope, like some of his colleagues, that he would, he would support this.
Thank you. There's nobody else requested to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak before I bring in councillor Crute, and he's right to reply? Anyone? Councillor Crute?
Thank you, Chair. When I moved the motion, I did mention that the whole point of the motion had been well researched and costed by the Fairer Share campaign. There's an awful lot of work being put into this, and all that we're asking is that as a council, we acknowledge the principles, the benefits and the feasibility of adopting a proportional property tax. The work's already been done, I don't know why we need to pursue further options. We've been criticised in the past, as councillor Tinsley says, for moving motions that have no defined outcome. So we made a point this morning to move a motion that has a defined outcome, something to move towards. In my opinion, the amendment is a fudge. It kicks this into the long grass, we can't accept that. The whole point of the motion was to look at the benefits of a proportional property tax and to adopt specifically a proportional property tax. So I'm against the amendment, sorry, and I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, I'll pass over to Helen.
Thank you, Chair. So we'll vote now on the amendment as moved by councillor Bell. When the vote opens, it's one in favour of the amendment, two against it, or three to abstain. If you have the support of 10 members. It'll be a name vote, names will appear in the minutes. So the vote is open. It's one in favour of the amendment, two against the amendment, three to abstain. As usual, if you press the wrong button, pressing the right one will correct the position.
Four fifty-nine against, the amendment forty, no abstentions. Members, the amendment is carried and becomes the substantive motion. We are just about on the 30-minute for the motions. So councillor Bell, do you wish to say anything before we put this to the vote?
Do you have 10 members to support that? Yeah, names will be recorded in the minutes. Vote's open. It's one in favour of the motion, two against the motion, three to abstain. Closing the vote.
Four, four ninety against, seven abstentions to. The motion is carried, thanks, members. Can we move to item number fourteen, questions from members? One question has been submitted for today's meeting. The question will be displayed on screen. Can I invite councillor York to ask his question, please?
I was elected in May to represent the West Auckland Electoral Division. We were all elected in May, and we're all elected to add value to our communities. This levelling up fund, or this application for the West Auckland bypass, is detrimental to my community. It's detrimental for several reasons. Councillor Bell come along to a public meeting a few months ago and said it didn't have any impact on West Auckland, what it does. If you look at government statistics, car usage over the next 20 years is going to increase. That's going to push more traffic through West Auckland. We need the council to reconsider on this application. We've had a petition signed
Can we have a question, please, councillor York?
Yep. We've had a petition signed
Rather than a statement, question, please.
We've had a petition signed, petition signed by a thousand residents in West Auckland, calling for this council to have a rethink on this bid. Can the leader please give us an explanation?
Thank you. Leader?
Is that on? Right, thank you, Chair, and I'm going to answer the question that's been submitted. So I'd like to thank councillor York for the question. I take it as a compliment to this Cabinet and joint administration that you have the confidence in our ability that we could not only develop, consult and produce the Bishop Auckland levelling up bid, but also make a decision to submit it in under 10 working days of taking office. Therefore, credit where credit's due, the bid that was submitted for Bishop Auckland constituency was drawn up under the previous administration, and presumably in conjunction with the Cabinet at the time. The particular element that your question refers to is one that I would have expected you to be fully aware of, given that at the time you were the Cabinet Support Member for the portfolio holder, responsible for highways. As members are aware, the remaining five bids have already involved member engagement, a first for many members in this hall, but I can promise you it won't be the last. So councillor York, in conclusion, this bid was drawn up under the previous administration, and therefore you may be better placed to ask councillor Marshall these questions.
Councillor York, you are able to ask a supplementary question, which may arise from the question or the response.
Thanks, Chair. We were perfectly aware of the application, but we also agreed as a party to consult with residents out there. There's been absolutely no consultation with residents about this bid.
Question, please, again, councillor York.
Yeah, all right, the question is, if a bypass is good enough for the people of Toffdill, why is it not good enough for the residents of West Auckland?
Thank you. Leader?
Thanks for the supplementary question. There will be, in the new year, a consultation with the members of Bishop Auckland constituency to look at what we do going forward. to look at what we do going forward, but can I also remind you that the previous administration drew up and proposed the 2020 County Durham Plan. This bypass to go past via West Auckland was never in it, it's never been in discussion and it doesn't form part of any joint transport committee or any joint transport work that we've seen for the last 20 years.
Members, that concludes the business of this meeting. Please remain seated because we'll move on to the extraordinary meeting that follows. Before this meeting finishes, I would like to thank everyone for taking part and those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting. Can I also take the opportunity to extend the compliments of the season to you all and wish you all well for Christmas and the New Year? Thank you very much for your attendance. That brings us to the end of the first meeting. We will be restarting the meeting in a couple of minutes if you can just bear with us while we prepare for the broadcast.